Once again, I'm surprised, ninety-six hundred dollars for very small, micro-sized lots.
I'm not in accessory, Mr. Mancini.
I would make the recommendation that tonight, we may want to just simply table this until we have further input from Mr. Mancini. And if, in fact, he's correct with these figures that he has here. And I'd like to have, I would like counsel to have a tax map to take a look at what he's looking to purchase. So we have a better understanding to see what the value of these properties may in fact be or not be. And I did see the tax map, and quite honestly, I don't see no value whatsoever except for Mr. Carmine. So I would like to see the city get rid of these lots and get them back on its tax rolls. I just would like both parties, the city and Mr. Carmine in his wake, to be satisfied with what we do here. That's all. I want to see a happy meeting where, you know, both entities are going to be satisfied. You care if we hold off on this, Mr. Carmine?
Sure.
All right. We'll come back next month and hopefully we'll have a decision according to Billings. And Mr. Lafferty will guide us to the proper way to dispose of it if that's the direction of counsel to go. All right?
So how, how are we going to discuss this with the tax commissioner so this way it can be finalized?
I'm going to send him an email indicating that when we have our next meeting, that'll be the thing we're doing on the top of the meeting to find out, in this presentation with the lots. The value, and Randy is going to tell us the appropriate way of, if we decide we want to sell, how we need to do it. That would be the best way to do it, I think.
But then you're still making a decision right then and there afterwards.
What do you want to do? Discuss it?
Yeah, but we need to have time. He needs to tell us, you know, why they're at risk for that. And then we need to discuss that and.
You can also call him, too. You can also call him if he needs to.
We should discuss it once together.
I would prefer that rather than bothering Mr. Mancini on five different phone settings, he can come in here and explain to us at our next council meeting, the value of these properties and what we need to do, if we need to do anything.
Okay, but he'll definitely do that because.
I can't speak for Mr. Mancini. I'm going to ask him to.
Okay.
I think that would be the fair thing to do. So everything is just all above and on board.
I just think that we should just say, after we have discussions with Mr. Mancini, then we can address it, not at the next meeting to give him the decision. Because after we've discussed with Mr. Mancini and we have time to take it in, understand it, talk to Mr. Lafferty about it, then we can give a decision to sell the property or not. Not at the Mancini.
We'll see how it goes. Next, we have an email from Steve Feider, I won't say his name, pertaining to, he's a board member of the AC Parks on the seedlings of the Salem Oak, is that you sent it?
Will we give him copy of this or what?
It was in our package.
Oh, it is.
I mean, honestly, I don't think we have to do anything. You know, it's just simply a letter that was given to us and, you know, explaining what's going to happen because it's a hope seedling from a Salem oak tree that is going to be planted in the county park. So I'm okay with it being planted over there. We'll monitor it and water it and take good care of it. It would be a nice addition to the county park, I would think. If this council feels differently, you might have it planted out front of City Hall, but I think it would be better in the county park. We're moving down to a ordinance. We have two different ordinances that we can choose from tonight. One of the ordinances is to adopt, to opt out. The other one could be that we would reneg on that and do an ordinance to opt in. We heard testimony from someone tonight, and quite frankly, we have the ability to wipe out our local purpose tax. With an excess of a million dollars of revenue that the city would receive, that basically would wipe out our local purpose tax. I've been on this table for quite a number of years. I've been living in Estill Manor since nineteen eighty. I have never seen a ratable ever come into our town and certainly something of this magnitude. We had a couple of meetings ago. It was said that we would have a subcommittee to meet on the planning board. The subcommittee recommended to go with a cannabis ordinance. It then got sent to the planning board, and the planning board also made the recommendation that we should have a cannabis ordinance. That would just simply be to a grow facility, and that's that. It would be well-secured. It would not be open to the public. There are no environmental issues that would have an adverse effect to the community. We did not want it in the village area. We certainly didn't want it anywhere near a school. We chose the highway commercial area and any remote area. One of the areas that I was actually thinking of that would be an ideal site, and in speaking to the executive director, God rest her soul, she has just passed away if you're not aware, Nancy Wettenberg, but our landfill, we could do one or two things over there. We could in fact put a warehouse. Our landfill's an extremely obscure area. Nobody would know it's there. But once again, a thirty thousand square foot facility, we could generate up to a million dollars a year in revenue, is mind-boggling to this council. It should be mind-boggling to everybody to have a windfall such as that to bail out the city. I had a conversation with the applicants or the proposed applicants, and I said one thing and one thing only, that yes, we are struggling at a rateable loss and that the state owns more than sixty percent of our city. Everything else that was in that email, I forwarded over as I was listening to the presentations to the city clerks. Anybody's welcome to see it. I received it late last night, and quite frankly, and I want it on record, I voted against legalization of marijuana. However, in speaking to a number of people within our community, and I spoke to quite a number of them, they were all in favor. It was actually six law enforcement officials who basically said the same thing. Well, if it's legal, you might as well make the money. Spoke to our county executive, who basically said, it's a no-brainer. If you're going to make a million dollars a year and you're going to vote no, that's insane. I spoke to our first district assemblyman, and he says, you're complaining that you're not receiving any money in Highlands Eight. He says, here's your opportunity to make a severe windfall.
Well, this comes along with it.
What are the other depths? Like, are you looking into the fact that possibly we might have to get a police station in?
Why would we need a police station?
I just asked him.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't need one.
Well, I asked you, I said, where all of your other places are? Do you have a police station in?
But that's.
He said, yeah.
Yeah, because I'm in California. Sorry.
But I asked that question, and, you know, I don't know. Maybe you just said in your statement about keeping it away from our schools. Do you think that's close to the school? Because it was my bus ride.
It's well more than a thousand feet.
Well, I left my school on the bus. I went right past there.
Well, what are we doing? What is the next action for council to take? I actually believe that the council should vote no and introduce to have the cannabis ordinance. Because quite frankly, I think we have a responsibility to the taxpayers of this town.
But what is our next action? That's council session right now. What is our next action?
My house, counsel, we have one for second reading and public hearing ordinance number three of two thousand, twenty-twenty-one. So I don't think anything's on the table right now, but it should be the public hearing on ordinance three of twenty-twenty-one first.
Make a motion, we open the public hearing on oh-three of twenty-twenty-one. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Meeting is now open to the public pertaining to this issue only. Mrs. Garrett?
Kathy Gary, one sixty-three to thirty-eight. Why can't this be put on the ballot?
It'd be too late.
Quite frankly, what I would, when it comes down to being closed to the public, I actually think that this should go out to our Swift Beach connect. Our entire residents should know what we are about to do. And we can hold a meeting over in the school auditorium, but I think the public should have the right to know and should have the right to say whether they would like to see this or not.
That's why I don't understand.
Wait a minute. Her question was, why can't it go on the ballot? Mr. Solicitor, can we have a local referendum?
You can have a public question. It would not be a referendum. It would be a public question. But the public was made aware of this ordinance. There was a public notice published when this ordinance was adopted on the first reading. And the ordinance had been made available to the public here at City Hall, as well as, I believe, on the website, as well as on the website.
And in answer to your question, Mrs. Garrett, we can't wait till then because all the municipalities in the state of New Jersey have a drop dead date of August the twenty-first. And if we don't take any type of action, whether we opt in or whether we opt out, then the state's going to basically make the decision for us, and anything could happen at that point, and that's what we don't want.
Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to point out one thing.
Hold on, Mr. Mancini. The meeting is open to the public when Mrs. Garrett.
Okay, sorry.
And then, that, okay.
I was just going to ask, answer her question.
Is there enough time for us to put it on the ballot?
No.
For this, for this?
No. Under CREMA, that's the, that's the legislation that we're dealing with. It's New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Enforcement Systems and Marketplace Modernization Act. Municipalities were given a hundred and eighty days from February twenty-first to either take no action or opt out or take something in between. CREMA itself has a built-in regulatory and zoning and land use structure. So if you do nothing, then you're governed by the statutory land use structure in CREMA. The alternatives are to modify that land use structure by permitting some, some classes of activity. There are six classes of cannabis activity which have been authorized by CREMA, ranging from, from growing, cultivation, cultivation all the way through retail. In between, you have wholesale, you have manufacturing, you have distributing. So there are, there are six classes. And you can have, and we had this discussion before, but for the benefit of the people that weren't here before, I'll look at it again. You can elect some, none, or all of those classes of activity. I am very familiar with the Deon ordinance. And in fact, when the cannabis subcommittee met, a compromise that was reached in the subcommittee sort of was a hybrid of the Deon ordinance. And it includes application fees, it includes annual registration fees. That ordinance was not introduced at our last meeting. Rather, council elected to introduce the opt-out. The, a number of municipalities are opting out. All the Wildwoods did, Upper Township did, Ocean City did, and I can go through the list of the communities that are opting out. And part of the problem is that.
Lower Township opted in.
Lower opted in, Upper opted out. And the rationale from a lot of the municipalities has been that the guidelines, there are going to be administrative guidelines, much like there is in the casino industry, except they're not going to come out until after August twenty-second. So the municipalities do not have any idea what the regulatory structure is going to be. Also, a lot of the municipalities that are opting out are taking a wait-and-see approach in order to see how it impacts communities that opt in before they, before they opt in for their community. If you do not opt out or take some regulatory path for, for a period of five years, you're unable to do so. If you do opt out and take a wait-and-see approach, at any time, you can modify that position. So it's, it's, if you're out, you can get in anytime. If you're in, you can't get out. So that's the way the statute was structured. So, I mean, it's a policy decision that every municipality is wrestling with right now. And what this council did at the last meeting was, I believe by a four-to-one vote, elected to opt out and take a wait-and-see approach. That is the ordinance that is up for second reading this evening.
And Mr. Lafferty, with all due respect, there's thirty-seven licenses that are going to be issued. And I would almost bet, indeed to my house, that all thirty-seven of those licenses are spoken for and they're just waiting to see what are the towns that are going to opt in, and that is where they're going to locate their business.
Well, first of all.
And then we lose out because those thirty-seven licenses will now have a prospective home of where we're going to go to.
There are thousands of applicants that are anticipated. There are only thirty-seven licenses. The applicants include those that are already approved for grow in the medicinal field. And there's, listen, there's a lot of speculation. There's speculation that the medicinal growers are going to get preference because they have established facilities already, they already meet the security requirements and all of that. Some municipalities are concerned that this is a gateway for big agriculture to come into your community and change the character of your community, that these, these businesses will ultimately sell off, much like the small banks did. So, I mean, there's a lot of speculation, and that's why some municipalities have elected to opt out. We represent multiple players in the industry. And when we met with the subcommittee, we brought that experience there. I had one of the leading expert, legal experts, speak to the subcommittee. But this is a policy decision. You need to make for your account. It's not a legal decision, but I can tell you what the legal implication is.
It's a policy decision, Mr. Lafferty. Quite frankly, you said last month that you can't imagine any company that would want to come over here because it's just too far out of the way to transport it out of the city. You basically steered a policy decision in which any time I've ever called you on the phone, you repeatedly told me that's a policy decision, you have to speak to your colleagues about it. However, you were rather very vocal at the last meeting to indicate that, finally, unlikely anybody's going to want to come over here.
I don't think we were talking about it earlier, so.
That we have, we had a ordinance that you prepared that was going to be able to allow just two components of these six. One would be to, would be to grow, and the other one would be the warehouse to just simply package it and get it out. And usually, one goes hand in hand with the other.
And Mayor, that ordinance.
Those are the only two ordinances that we were looking to.
No, that ordinance was never introduced, and it was never.
It was never introduced, but you certainly prepared that ordinance, and it was given to all the members of council. And my question is.
I prepared that ordinance at your direction.
That's correct. At the direction of the planning board and also at the direction of the ad hoc committee. Let me ask you this. Who asked you to prepare an ordinance to opt out?
I can't tell you specifically which member of council asked for that. It may have been more than one member.
It was a month ago, Randy. I mean, come on. You can't tell.
Mayor, I don't know.
You, you don't remember.
I don't remember.
You don't remember?
No, I don't.
Somebody requested.
I discussed it. It may have been Mr. Dilch, it may have been the council president. I just don't remember.
You really don't remember that?
No, I don't. This has been more talked about than anything that's been before council in the time that I've been here. It doesn't surprise me that any one of us would not remember. Please don't interrupt.
You were the one to ask that.
Please don't interrupt.
That's opted out, Mr. Dilch. By the way, which law firm represents you and your family and your business?
Save the nonsense.
Which law firm represents?
Uka Levinson, Mr. Lafferty's law firm. When did I meet Mr. Lafferty, Mayor?
I think that's a conflict.
When did I meet Mr. Lafferty? You want to bring this up? When did I meet Mr. Lafferty?
He said.
When you introduced me to him. I had never met him before in my life. You introduced me to him the third time that you sought to make him our solicitor. That's when I met Mr. Lafferty. Until then, I had never met him in my life. For the record, I've used this law firm for thirty-seven years.
And I think there's a conflict of interest.
Then you shouldn't have brought him in when I was here, and you shouldn't have introduced me to him.
I was not aware that there was going to be.
It's not a conflict that you own land, you want to see approved for cannabis cultivation?
I was not aware that there would be all the nonsense going on.
Or a house that you want to see approved for retail in a reelection year?
Excuse me?
You threw the whole deal right down the trash, Joe. Good job. Just as you do. You trashed the whole deal.
What did you say about a retail store?
You heard me.
I never did. Never did.
That's what I said.
I am not in favor of a retail store, listen.
Oh.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Lafferty. If we opt in right now, does that mean we have to take all six things? We have to take, we take everything?
No.
Or if we opt out, then we can just pick and choose what we want?
Opt out means opt out.
No, we can opt back in at any time.
Yes.
You can. You can opt back in at any time.
And that's a lawyer's honor.
If you opt out, if you opt out partially, what you opted into, you're committed to for a five-year period.
Right. Sir, what's your name again?
Ramsey, Ramsey Nivani. A couple of things. One, by you guys voting to allow us to operate here, we only get to apply. We are applying against companies worth hundreds of millions of dollars, right? It's not saying that we'll get here. I do operate in other states. In those states, the local area gets the right to state what they're allowing to have in their area and who gets to operate there. So you guys do have some, some power to say, okay, even though you're saying yes to the local laws, you have the rights to create your own guidelines that have to operate within that. So, you know, in these decisions, I know that there is a little bit of a time crunch because August is going to be here before we know it. So if you guys vote no, we don't even get to apply. If you vote yes, we just get the chance to apply. And that doesn't mean that everybody gets to come into your area. You guys could set up rules that say, maybe you have to have an operating business here already. Maybe, you know, it has to be an operating hemp business. And then there's a way to start exclusively selecting who gets to even apply. I'm here to work with everybody. I'm a neighbor. I'm somebody that wants to become friends with people. I don't want to be a stranger. I don't want to be an outsider. I want to be somebody that we all get to know each other. I plan on having a baby here. You know, like, I don't want.
Sir, frankly, what you are is confusion. We're not here to decide whether or not you're going to grow pot in Estill Manor. We're here to decide whether or not Estill Manor is going to allow cultivation of marijuana or any aspect of marijuana, the commercialization of cannabis at all.
Gotcha.
It is not your personal matter. It is on your, where you're sitting, but for us, it is not.
That makes sense.
Please don't reduce it to that.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, I should also advise you that the clerk has advised me, as you know, under the municipal land use law, this had to be, the ordinance, the opt-out ordinance had to be submitted to the planning board for their review and comment. And I'm advised that the planning board did conduct that review, and that by a vote of three to two, they approved the opt-out ordinance and had no comments.
They rejected the opt-out ordinance. They didn't approve it. They rejected.
That's what I understand, that they.
That is incorrect.
They went along.
That is incorrect. That is absolutely wrong.
It's not the way I got it from the secretary that day. But what they put on here wasn't, the way I understood it is that they went along with what city council was going to do.
There were two members that went along with it, okay? Interestingly, members that were on the ad hoc committee, but there were three members who were vehemently opposed to the opt-out ordinance. So that is incorrect, what you have.
Well, I don't have the specific details, Mayor, so I, I'm just saying what I was told.
It's, it's long entry.
I'm sorry.
It's just long entry.
But in any event, their review is consistency with the master plan and whether they had any comments and had no comments relative to either the master plan or other things.
Yeah.
We're not bound by any of that.
So the reality would be that.
What I don't, what I don't understand, Mayor, is this. If you think that this is the golden goose egg for Estill Manor, why did you keep such a secret? Why did you go all along?
Where was the secret?
Well, they said they've been talking with you and conversating with you since February.
You visited in February.
You visited, don't.
I visited.
You never told yourself.
I visited.
But if it's a golden egg, why wouldn't you tell us all about it? Why wouldn't you be broadcasting?
I don't have enough information.
You shouldn't have told us that you were there and communicating, but you kept it under lid until, until we came to four to one. And then you're right, I'm speaking. And then you're right, I'm speaking. And then we were at, you were at the rough center, but you came to four to one, and then you didn't know what to do. But then said, no, Mr. Dilch. That's the only reason he came, we, that's the only reason we even know about it.
That's why I understand they've been trying to speak to Mr. Dilch, and he doesn't want to speak to me.
Because he wanted to do it the right, proper way. I read the letters. He said, come and cancel.
Everybody's copied all the emails. I told him to come to council, and I heard from him the first time in my life last week. Stop it. You visited with them and started discussion in February.
Did you go there also?
No.
You've never been there?
No.
You've never been to his farm?
No.
That's not what I thought I understood.
But I mean, that's what I'm just saying. If it's the greatest thing since sliced bread, why did you keep it to yourself? Why?
What is going on?
And I have to wonder what you're doing with that property of yours on Port Road, because you've got twenty-two acres there where you could have a farm there, and you got your other house up there where you could have a retail store. And when I asked you, I said, I asked, I asked you at the zoning board. I said, all I want is an honest, yes or no, do your, any of your businesses or any of your properties been having anything to do with cannabis? Is that why you're pushing it through?
No. Mrs. Marks, no, no.
See, and this is exactly what you did. You threw the pen down and, um, doctor. But what I asked you was, was a legitimate question. And what your reply was, was never a yes or no. What it was is, I don't have enough money to start that business. That's what I'm saying.
I don't have.
Which I referred to you to say that you could have associates to help you get going.
Now, do you want facts?
You never answered, yes or no.
Do you want facts?
I would have liked to have the information.
I would have liked the information.
Do you want facts, yes or no?
What, from you?
Yes.
Or they were?
Fact is this.
I don't, I don't think.
My house on Route thirty is two and a half acres. It will not fly. Part of our ordinance that we are proposing to do.
It's a commercial zone?
Part of our ordinance that we are proposing to do had to be a minimum of five acres. I have two and a half acres. And not only that, I'm not interested in doing that. I'm interested in selling that house as quickly as I can, not waiting around for years.
Your store?
Okay. Secondly, I wanted to build a house on my property, and I, and the one piece, I had to go more than twelve-hundred feet in because of the wetlands. That property you can't do anything with except put blueberries on it. And that is that.
Well, Mayor, now, I'm, I'm going to have to.
So there's nothing that I can put.
Remembering the first time that this came out with a large commercial cultivator, national cultivator, that wanted to, I think, buy the same piece these folks have, and they were discussing it with you. You wished to acquiesce from the discussions because you were trying to sell them your land on South River Road.
You're out of your mind.
Now, it's in the minutes of prior meeting.
No such thing.
Absolutely true. Absolutely true.
What's meaning of this?
I think we'll hear from members of the public who also heard you say before the night's over.
We'll, we'll see some time. Yeah, of course, you've got all your people lined up.
That's why you're doing this, because it's political.
You've got all your people lined up. It's okay, Mr. Dilch.
The public wants to speak.
The public wants to speak. This, this is supposed to be a public session.
I'm sure you have words with me.
Not nice, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Actually, I'm hoping I do. Usually when we talk about reasonableness, we talk about compromise. We talk about ways to try to figure out, um, how to make things work for the maximum number while protecting everybody.